Good evening, everybody. This is the Wednesday, November 5th, meeting of the Rockport School Committee meeting. We are here in the library together and our, our meeting, as always, is being recorded. So, just so that we know, so we remember. We're going to begin with the approval of minutes. They were in our drive. I'm hopeful that people had a minute to review them. Are there any changes? Hearing none, I'd accept a motion to approve them.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Now it's time for public comment. There are many people in the room or any here to take advantage of the public comment period of this meeting. I think all of you are on the agenda. All right, thank you. Dr. Branco, any correspondence?
None at this time.
Any donations?
None at this time.
All right, then that brings us to one of our favorite parts of the meeting. It's called Share the Success. Charlie Tellis is here from our Student Advisory Committee and he is going to give us an update on what's going on in school.
Hello.
Hi.
For elementary updates, we had an annual costume parade last Thursday. It was trunk or treat. It was great. That's all I have for elementary updates, but for middle and high school updates, the yearbook team has had a very large group and has been taking superlative photos. I know last year there was only like a few people, but this year there's like, there's a lot. So, we had Sandy Hook Promise presentation from the Say Something Foundation and they discussed the SAVE program. That was really good. It was a, it was like an extended, uh, what's that called? Assembly, thank you. Yes, it was an extended assembly and they talked to us and gave us really important information that was, um, yes, it was very good. Middle school students are running a food drive for the open door, so there'll definitely be someone to talk to for that. For sports, golf, the season is currently over for golf, but the team had an amazing season and they won the Cal Champions title. Sounds good. Winter sports registration has occurred, offering students to participate in basketball, hockey, indoor track, swim, and cheer. And the hockey team is starting preseason and both soccer teams are going to the playoffs and both teams are in top 10. For the fine arts part, the music department had a visitor from Bulgaria who works at Berkeley. They kind of gave us like an introduction to, we have a, a trip to Croatia, Slovenia, and Bosnia next year. And so she kind of gave us, told us about the culture, gave us information about what kind of music we'd be hearing or playing and what kind of, what it's like over there. So it was very informational. This is not a fun one to end on, but PSATs we had for juniors and sophomores. We did, we did that. That was, that was, that was, that went, that went well. That went well. That was my first time. It went, it went. Oh, and we have an AP Art Gallery walkthrough soon. So that'll, that's fun. Yeah, that's it.
Charlie, I'm going to give last minute updates because I know you weren't standing in the freezing cold like some of us were since 3 o'clock and we have some of our team members here.
Yes.
So a huge shout out to our girls varsity soccer team for defeating Greenfield 6 to 1 this afternoon, some of them are here. They have second round tournament game this coming Saturday, 2:00 PM on, on our field at home. So if you're in town, it's a home game. It's great to get home games, so congratulations. And Athletic Director Parisi just texted Principal Rose and I like 30 seconds ago, said the boys won 3-0 and defeated West Boylston, so they will also be going on to second round. So congratulations to both teams.
Thank you, Charlie. Thank you, Dr. Branco. All right. And I will just say this for the benefit of everyone in the room, as you finish your presentation, if you have homework and you have things pressing on you at home, it is perfectly acceptable to slip out of the room. We understand that by the end of the meeting, it will just be us by our lonesome at the very end, but we know that the meeting could go for quite a while and we don't want people to feel trapped. And so that even goes for Charlie, who's sitting at the table. It's really okay if you need to slip out. We completely understand. The next item on the agenda is our Community Connections and Advocacy Subcommittee update. Dr. Branco and Ms. Delisi.
So we did not meet, but I, we met via an email, just to give an update that the third edition and fall edition of In the Loop is done. You have your copies in front of you here. They were in the post office today, I believe, and they should hit everybody's mailboxes in, there you go, they should hit everybody's mailboxes in Rockport Wednesday, Thursday or Friday of this week. So I'm really excited about this edition. It's chock full of some great, great information for the community to check out how things are going in our school district and a huge, huge shout out to the central office team, the leadership team, and the staff who have written articles and to those who have really put a lot of time into editing this document and this paper.
We really appreciate the work of the Subcommittee and the staff. Thank you so much. All right, I don't believe we have any unfinished business. That brings us to new business. We have a series of very interesting presentations tonight. We're looking forward to them. We're going to begin with Rockport Elementary students. They're going to talk about grade five STEM, I believe, crunch boxes. So we're excited to hear about this. Come on up. We invite you to, yep, come on up. Good evening. Take a seat right here. And the way this works is when you want to talk, you push the button on the microphone, okay? So take it away.
And the first thing you guys are going to do is all three of you introduce yourselves quickly, so everybody knows who you are. Turn that, turn that mic on. You're going to be his tech guy.
I live in Wakefield, so I'll be there right away.
Thanks, buddy. Gary Swanson, fifth grade teacher.
Leo Patrick, also fifth grade student.
Brody, introduce yourself one more time. Hit the buttons so that, yep, go ahead.
Brody Curly, fifth grade student.
Perfect. All right, go ahead, gentlemen.
What is Crunch Labs? Crunch Labs is a company founded by former NASA engineer and YouTuber Mark Rober that offers monthly STEM subscription boxes for kids and adults. These build box kits are designed to teach students science and engineering concepts as well as critical thinking skills, cooperation, and perseverance.
Thanks, student.
Thanks to an anonymous donor, each fifth grade student for the next five years will have the opportunity to build and take home 12 Crunch Lab creations.
Children learn science by doing science. Every student has their own kit to build, so every student has the opportunity to dig in and get their hands in on the, get their hands on the action.
Crunch Labs build boxes give students a unique way to explore Massachusetts' science and technology engineering frameworks, especially in the domains of physical science and technology
Specifically chosen build boxes that will align with other areas of our curriculum. For example, while studying the circumstances that inspired inventors to create their, to create their inventions, we writing about William Columbus Wind Turbine that incorporated a bicycle dynamo, we built the Disco Dynamo, a disco light that is powered by dynamo and
Each kit comes with its own set of directions as a class. We first watch the video together to explore the science behind the kit as well as get an overview of the build. Then students are able to work individually at their own pace. They are encouraged to seek out assistance from their peers, whether it's for helping, whether it's for help holding a piece together while manipulating a tiny screwdriver or for problem solving when they miss a step.
You guys want to show a couple of these up?
Yeah.
You want the cipher one?
You guys want? Stand up and face the, face, yeah, face the. And as I said, it does go along with our curriculum in there. It's all hands on, they love it, the children love it. They can't wait for the next one to come out.
You can say it first.
All right. Just going to talk loud. So, the, this cipher machine, well, it's a... Anyway, so this is a cipher machine that we've built and I believe, what month was this? I don't care. Anyway, um, so you hit this little on button, ooh, buttons. Anyway, and you, you spin this, oh, hold on. There's these things. So let's say you write your code. I'm just going to do my name. And you have your thing, your key, which is, so you pick your red number, which has this little arrow right here, arrow right here, and you just, that's bright under, turn that off for now. So you choose which one, I'm going to do T and Y. So you place that down, you find out, place it down, place it down, there we go. And you look and you write your key and then you find out, you go to your L. And you see, ooh, an M, so I'm just going to, right, and you go to your E and find out, eh, it's, it's an L. And you go to your O, same process like that. V, then you get someone else to find it. You give them the key, which is...
TY.
Y, yeah, sorry, forgot about that. Thank you, Brody. I don't know why I didn't listen to you. And you give them the key, which is T and Y, and they try, and they're going to have to solve it. You might mix this up a little bit, trying to confuse them. And let's say you give them a bajillion dollars if they can figure out this code. And, um, they probably won't because like the, um, this is so complexed and random that even a supercomputer couldn't find out any of the codes in them because like I said in the video that we watched to find out how to build it and what the science behind it is about. Now, Brody, why don't you tell them about the Disco Dynamo?
So, this usually has water in it and it's a weight, so it pulls it down, this one. And a light goes off once you pull it down. Can't really see it that good though. It's like if you put a black piece of paper over it, it would just show a ton of different colors. And also you could stick it to a wall, like in your bedroom and then like at night you could fill up the water, set it all the way up, and then just watch it fall on top of your room. So you have a little discount. I put it in my locker, but it didn't work out that good.
We have another one that does pen designs, different things like that. And the fourth one we've done is kind of, we call it a disc launcher. Didn't feel appropriate to bring that one tonight. I didn't want the disc flying around, but we have 12 of them, like it says in the video on the slides, and they're really looking forward to it. They're 100% engaged, they love it, they can't wait for the next one.
Okay, I have some questions. Don't go anywhere. And I'm sure my colleagues on the school committee will have questions as well. I'll start with easy questions and then I bet our questions are going to get more challenging. I'm curious to know how long it took to assemble each of those things?
I mean, not that long, like 10 minutes maybe, 15?
About 10 or 15 minutes maybe, maybe 20.
So, that's pretty quick. What did you learn?
We're fast at building things?
You learn how, how some parts work and how some parts don't, because some parts you have to like put a rubber band around, like in the decoding one. And also there's like a screwdriver, just screwing some screws and tons of rubber stuff. It's cool to figure out what you find in there.
Does, do all the boxes come with like very detailed instructions, like step-by-step guide on how to build them?
I would say so. Because there's different size rubber bands and stuff, so it like circles, like what rubber band?
There's little instructions, things.
See, like for the screws, it circles the big screw and not the little ones, so we know what screw to use in it.
They are pretty detailed by order, important. Okay, there are little things written in here. Anyway, um, so, yeah, I'd say they're pretty helpful and...
Detailed.
Detailed, easy to, makes it easier to build them.
I don't know if this is going to be a hard question or an easy question, but do you feel like this, the crunch boxes are different than other science lessons like you've had in the past or in other grades? And if so, how do you feel like it's different?
Well, first of all, we've never really had a science project that was by YouTuber before. That's one thing. Brody, why don't you say something else?
Because usually for science or tech or whatever, you, say for this, like science, you won't, you don't usually get a build box, so I think it's really cool that we'll be able to get one.
I have a two-part question for you. What's been your favorite box so far? And then second, why has that one been your favorite?
Mine is the decoding one. Because like, it's just like fun, like sending your friends a code and then like them trying to like decode it.
My favorite, I think, has to be, well, hmm, that's a hard one. I think it's also maybe the decoder because it's really complicated but also simple and it's fun to use and easy, but also fun to watch other people completely fail at trying to decipher a code, so.
Do the, do the, do the boxes, how do you connect the boxes to the bigger picture in science? So I think you talked a little bit, Leo, about how that connects to something bigger in science. What do you, what would you say that is connected to? What world do you think that would help you think about or learn about or what does that apply to? Do you talk about the applications? Because I bet these are really fun to put together, but how do they relate besides being cool?
Um, well...
Sort of a puzzle, it seems like.
Yeah.
Yeah. And it makes me think about, about how do we decode things? Maybe like computers.
Well... So I guess that's kind of my question is, it takes you about 15 minutes to build, but how long do you work with each box? Do you keep that box longer than the time that you are using it to build? Is that... So if it, it only takes you a very short amount of time to build, but are you keeping that box longer than amount of time that it's taken you to build? Do you use it for other things and just, just building?
So Leo, you talked about like after you build it, you hand it off to a teammate, right, or a friend to try to decode. After you've built it, are there often, you know, educational steps or next steps that you do in the classroom with partners or on your own?
Not really.
No, sometimes?
Let's see what a teacher would say about that one. I'm pretty sure, I think, let's, I bet the teacher can answer a lot of these. These guys are doing great. We're asking very hard questions.
I'd give them a lot of credit for saying 15 minutes because it probably took me about 45.
Yeah!
So we talked about, especially with the decoding one, we talked about how decoding was done back in World War I and World War II. And that was even represented in the YouTube video.
Yeah.
So I think even like what Leo was saying with the computers, so we do bring that history piece into it and Leo and Brody talking about using decoder, they can send them that, like every, every child gets one in fifth grade so that they can send messages to their friends. So I think, I'm sure that, I'm nervous, I'm sure they're nervous, so, but I think like you said, we, and you know, this one, some of them are more entertaining than others, but that decoder one, the decoder one so far has been very...
User-friendly?
Enlightening, if you will. It's in the sense of like trying to, connecting it to history and how they decoded messages in World War I and World War II and different things like that. Because that, again, is represented in the video and we talked about it. And we also connected it to a Christmas story when little, can't think of his name, got the Red Ryder thing in the mail. So, you know, they go back a long way, so it was a big connection in that regard, so.
I think about how much time it must take to go through these boxes as a teacher and how much time it must take to think through, where do we put this in the curriculum? And I'm sure there were other things that you did last year that you have to set aside to carve time out for this. And so I, my take on this is, wow, what a generous donor. Wow, what great teachers who can take these resources and fit them into the curriculum and make meaning and not just say, here, this is 15 minutes of fun, right?
The beauty of it is that it connects to our curriculum, obviously. And when we do hands-on experiments in science, you don't always get to bring something home.
Right.
With this set situation right now, the generous donation, they, these are theirs to go home. And again, sometimes they'll be able to connect with their friends, others will just be for their own personal use, but it's just great to have something that's not just going to be in the classroom that they can bring home with them.
Boys, would you recommend this to other schools?
Yes, I would.
I would too, but first let me say something. I am bad at guessing time or not very good, so when I said 15 minutes, I wasn't exactly 100% sure.
Time flies when you're having fun, so it could have been 45 minutes, but it felt like 15 minutes because it was fun.
I'd say about 25, actually.
So Mr. Swanson talked about hands-on learning. Do you think this is a way better way to learn about engineering and building and coding and some of the scientific work that can be done as you get older than him standing at the front of the classroom and just talking at you about engineering?
Yeah, I would say so.
Why, why is it better?
Because it's just having a build box in front of you and being able to like talk to your friends about like, how do you do this part? And if they help you, you get to like understand it better.
Awesome.
Also, Mark Rober, he worked for NASA and he tried putting JPL on the tires for a Mars rover, but instead he Morse coded it, so the Morse code said JPL. So JPL's just been all over Mars.
Is JPL like Jet Propulsion Lab?
I don't really know.
Yeah, I think that's what it is. That's so cool.
It was pretty cool.
That's really cool.
He said it in the video, it was funny.
Parting thoughts from the teacher point of view, stuff you've learned so far, things that are on your mind, things you're going to tweak?
I'm just looking forward to where it's the first experience for me. I'm looking forward to what's coming down the road with, we've done four, I believe, three or four?
Disc launcher, this, that, and that, so forth.
Yeah, so we've done four. So I'm looking forward to the connection moving forward and what the other, the nine are going to look like, or excuse me, are going to look like.
Yeah.
You guys are great.
You guys have done an awesome job. We asked hard questions. This is a big audience. The cameras are running for all of us, right? Most people are not very comfortable in this environment. You've done a really, really nice job. We appreciate the slides, the preparation of the presentation ahead of time. Yeah, you're on TV. Are there any other questions or comments or bits of feedback from members of the committee? All right, thank you very much, gentlemen. We really, really appreciate your time.
I do think we know who's building all of the IKEA furniture in your homes from now on, though, that's for sure.
All right, we are excited now to welcome Principal Rose and her students, middle high school students perhaps, here to talk about why Rockport.
If you guys want to like stand right around facing us and just pass the mics, that's good. We actually have extra mics here on the ends too.
Ms. Rose, we have two more mics here if they want to pass all four around.
So I'm excited to welcome middle and high school students today. This, this why Rockport was sort of a vision of us thinking about what would school committee want to hear about? And as I was saying to Mark, I always wish that sometimes you guys could hear as leaders of the school, you do so much work and time to keep this school running for our students, but you don't always get to hear the voices of the students in a really authentic way. And so a lot of these students were chosen to come tonight because of just conversations I had with them in the hallway that inspired me, something that they've done that, you know, just really informal snippets of things that I thought it would be really great for them to share with you tonight so that you could get a feel of what our students are doing. They're all different, they're all from different backgrounds. A lot of them, most of them are here by some sort of choice, meaning that they're either, either their parents' choice because they're here through school choice, or they left here and came back here, they went on exchange. Sometimes, some of them are just new to the district and some of them have been in Rockport for a while but just have a different perspective for whatever reason. So they all bring something very unique and different and we have students six all the way through 12 graders. So I will have them introduce themselves, let them know their grade, they're going to, they've prepared a little bit just to give you a background about who they are. And then they've just been asked to authentically share something about Rockport that they feel makes it special or unique and why hopefully they enjoy being a part of our community. So I'll start off with Charlie.
You can hold it, honey.
Hi, my name is Charlie Martin.
Do you want to say a little bit about yourself?
Oh, yeah. I came here in fifth grade and I'm 11 years old and my birthday is March 19th and I'm excited to read my speech and I'm in sixth grade.
Hi, my name's Aurelia Sharet. I'm in sixth grade as well with Charlie and my birthday is May 30th and Rockport for me is just fun.
Hi, my name is Bentley Perry. I came from Gloucester and I think Rockport is a nice school.
Hi, my name is Finn. I'm in seventh grade and I choiced in from, I choiced in this year and I live in Gloucester.
My name is Aliza Zucker. I'm a freshman this year and I've actually been at Rockport since kindergarten.
I'm Ruby. I'm a sophomore in high school choice year and freshman year.
Hi, I'm Ariana Di Benedictus. I'm a senior. I've been, I live in Gloucester, but I've been going to Rockport since first grade and I got choiced in.
Hi, I'm Lola. I'm from Argentina. I'm an exchange student, also I'm a senior and I arrived to Rockport like two months ago. I'm living with Mark. He's the best host dad.
My name is Sam. I'm a senior. I've been in Rockport since I was in first grade. I choiced in first grade.
All right, so now they're going to share a little bit about their stories. We had, we did a little brainstorming this morning, but even I haven't heard exactly what they're going to say, so they're going to surprise us all.
Rockport Schools is one of the best schools I've been to in a long time because my family and I was going to move to Australia until COVID hit and we were quote unquote homeless. We had to stay in many hotels until we found Rockport. Rockport has completely changed our lives and yes, it was very hard to find houses in Rockport, but we finally, we finally... But we finally, we finally are in a good rental house and the school helps us a lot. I know a lot of people who have been here since kindergarten in Puyque, but they still treat me like I've been here since forever. And I'm glad to hear my story and have a great night.
So I just came to Rockport this year. I've been in a Gloucester school basically my whole life. Um, the teachers here, like if you're like me with an overactive brain, I'm, I'm special, don't worry. Um, they just help you. The teachers are really nice here. I've lived in Gloucester basically my whole life. Um, the friend, the people I've made fri- friends with here are just great, like, like Ms. Rose is like the greatest principal I could ever have. Like, she's just the best. So, um.
So I've been also in Gloucester my whole life. I just came here too. And when I came here on the first day, I felt very welcomed and I, meeting friends was very easy. And I just thought it was a fun, very fun day.
Hi, my name is Phineas. I'm in seventh grade and I've gone to private schools my whole life up until this year. The school has been a really different and positive experience for me. From the day, from the very first day, I noticed how welcoming and supportive everyone is. It feels like a big community where everyone cares about each other and help each other and wants to see everyone succeed. The teachers take time to guide us and make learning meaningful. And my classmates are very kind, friendly and always willing to include others. It is amazing to be in a place where everyone looks out for one another, where, um, where friendships can grow and where you feel encouraged to do your best every day.
Um, so I'm a little different from the last few people that have spoken. I've actually been at Rockport, like I said, since kindergarten. And I've loved being able to grow up with, like, these students and they've just been kind of a family for me in the Rockport community. Um, I'm part of this, uh, group called Project Three Five One. So every year, um, one student from every town and city in Massachusetts, there are three hundred and fifty-one. They choose an eighth grade ambassador, so one person to represent each town and city. And thanks to Ms. Herman, she encouraged me to do it, and so I've been so happy that I've been part of this. Um, and we've helped, like, a lot of people. And I've loved to do all of the, like, service and, like, community service we've done for Rockport and all of Massachusetts. And I've loved seeing, like, how much of a difference I've been able to make, so thank you.
Um, I'm Ruby and my whole life, school has never been, like, never came easy for me. And when I came to Rockport, I was so nervous, but I felt so welcomed and like so, like, I don't know how to describe it. But it didn't take a while for me to make friends and school is actually, like, enjoyable for me now. Um, I do a co-op for gymnastics in high school, which is really important for me. Um, I'm really grateful for all the opportunities I've had. I went to the Dominican Republic last year and, yeah.
Um, Rockport has opened up many doors and opportunities for me to grow as a leader. Um, they've opened up so many ways for me to be involved in the school as a leader. I wasn't always a leader, but I knew deep inside of me that, um, I could be a leader. I just had to overcome some insecurities and take some steps of faith. But, um, through my high school career, I was able to take, take some steps of faith by running for vice president my sophomore year and then the junior and senior year, I've been able to become president. And it's not just for the title, it's to serve my class and to help unify our class, make us become a stronger, um, class. And Ms. Rose has been so supportive throughout it all.
Okay. Uh, when first I arrived to Rockport, everything was completely different, like schools are completely different. But I felt so welcoming, um, and so nice, also my host family. So I think that, that's a great, no, that's why I don't have homesickness because I really feel like home here. So I love being here. I love also my US history teacher.
Um, well, I really love Rockport and I've kind of grown into that, like, um, realizing, like, going and coming back. You know, I, I felt like I wanted to leave because I wanted a different experience with school and everything. But then leaving, I realized how great we have it here because in Italy, they are very rigid about school and they're very focused and the teachers, it's kind of like a sink or swim kind of thing. Um, and but here, and they don't really have, like, fun things to do in school. School isn't meant for that. Um, and so I ended up, like, missing that part of school a lot, like, being with your class and having, like, fun activities to do and being part of sports teams and the orchestra and everything like that. And that's not just a part of American high school, but it's also a part of Rockport because here, everyone knows each other, everyone, you, you know at least two or three people, you're friends with them in every, every activity. And, like, I can talk to Mariana and say, hey, we should do this with our class. And she'll listen to that and she'll take that in. And also Ms. Rose and a lot of the teachers. Like, in Italy, they, the teachers, they really focus on teaching and that was about it. Um, but here, you know, every teacher cares and every teacher knows your name and they'll reach out and help if you need any help, so, yeah.
I would say one of the best things about Rockport is that it's a small community. I mean, we all know that Rockport doesn't exactly have a huge class size. I mean, we're not Manchester or Ipswich or Gloucester or anything like that. But I think the best thing about Rockport is that it is small because everyone grows up, like, together. I've known the same friends since I was six years old. Like, I've known everyone in my entire class for twelve years, you know? And it's like, the best part about it, one of the other things too, is that when you're growing up, you're growing up with the same people. So I went into high school with all my friends. We were all experiencing different things together. I've been playing on the same sports teams with the same kids for thirteen years. Like, last year, the basketball team, I've been playing with those guys for so long. And I think, like, that's what makes Rockport, like, really, really special for everyone that goes through it.
So I know we could elaborate on a lot of things, but I would love to hear if you have specific questions, knowing a little bit about the students in front of you. We could open it up that way, unless there's anything that you guys missed out on saying that you want to add. Good. Yeah, so what questions do you have?
From the committee, are there some questions or comments?
I would say more of a comment. Um, it just shows how much work you put in, Ms. Rose. When I hear the words that come out of these kids' mouths, like welcoming, community, acceptance, support. And I know that that's, you know, no, no one's job done alone, but it starts at the top. And so I appreciate all the work you've put in to make it such a caring community.
I have more of a comment, too. Um, I just really commend all of you for getting up and speaking to us and just being so clear in your thoughts and, and allowing us to know a little bit more about you. Some of you I don't know at all, some of you I've known since you were in preschool. Um, and I don't think I could have done that at your age. So I just really thank you so much for coming and just kind of giving us that insight. And maybe I'll think of a question after some other people, but right now, it's a great job.
Sure, thank you so much for coming. Um, I'm really impressed with the ten of you and your different backgrounds and experiences that you've had. It's, it's really varied and it's, it's really great to hear, even in those brief snippets. I'm curious, um, whether you, school in Argentina or Italy or those that came from Gloucester. With those experiences that you've had, is there something that you would like to see maybe added to Rockport? Or from a student's perspective, you know, based on all those experiences you guys have had, what maybe would you like to see in Rockport that you don't have right now?
I think it's perfect. I just think it's perfect. I think it's fine.
Maybe like a volleyball team?
It's a good idea.
Interesting one. Thanks, Ms. Rose. Were you talking about, like, just like in the school academics? Were you talking about sports? Honestly, I don't know if there's really anything much else to add because if I feel like you were gonna add anything, I feel like you would need more kids in the school. I think you guys have honestly done a great job with adding things academically. Like, I think the PLTW program is a huge asset for the school. I mean, I'm building a robot right now to beat other robots in tug-of-war. So, like, that's pretty, that's pretty awesome and you learn a whole bunch of new things. Yeah, I don't know if there's really anything else that you guys need to add. I think you guys have done a great job.
Um, I also agree with Sam because I, going to Italy, like, I, I kind of wanted to get out of here and, like, just experience something new, you know? This is the only thing I knew, but I realized how much I miss it because, like, their system of schools, like, kind of, um, almost like backwards. Like, they choose a specific type of high school at fourteen. At, out of middle school, you go to, like, an engineering school or a medical school or something like that. And they get very kind of locked into that subject. And it made me grateful to be able to have the flexibility and the freedom to choose what we, like, classes that we want. And also, like, and have support outside of that, and we're really able to explore our own interests. Um, so that was very, like, oh my God, I'm so grateful that I don't have to stay in one path for my whole life. So that was really great. And not just about school in the US, but also in Rockport. Like, being a small school allows us to make those changes easily, so, yeah.
Seniors, seniors, I know you're really close, but you have three quarters of the school year left to go, right? Um, two quarters, sorry, two quarters, really, right, sorry, two quarters. Um, how do you think, um, we have done preparing you for getting off the island, so to speak, and getting out into the real world or going, or going back to Argentina, right? How, how do you think we've set you up for the next step, whatever your next step is? How do you, do you feel prepared and if so, give us maybe one example of how you feel prepared?
I just don't want to leave. I want to stay here. Well, as Mari said, Argentina's schools are pretty similar to Italy's. So, yeah, I know, Rockport is perfect in any sense, like, no, any sense, any way.
Um, I feel like for me, like, becoming a leader has helped me, like, grow more, like, wanting me to grow more in the path of becoming like a business entrepreneurial kind of mindset. And, um, like, opening up the opportunities to, like, be part of the SAC and, like, other leadership has, like, helped me learn teamwork, like, delegation, all the things that you can connect to the business world as well.
Charlie just has something she wants to add.
Um, I forgot to say this, but it's true. Um. Wait. Ms. Rose has been, like, the best principal I've ever had. Like, all my principals, they were good, but she has been the best principal I've ever had in all the schools I've been to.
Thank you very much. I swear.
Um, my mom is Ms. Herman, so I've, 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 like, known the school, but I was at Gloucester and I kept on hearing about it and I was like, no, it's too small, it's too small. But I didn't feel very, like, I, when I came here, I felt so seen. Like, my teachers, I have, like, real relationship with them. Like, not even because I've known them for the majority of my life, but just because they're, like, they actually care. I feel so, like, cared and loved at Rockport. And I honestly, like, couldn't, I, I would never leave, like, I couldn't change anything. I think going to different schools makes me appreciate how, like, welcoming this community is.
Do you, am I still answering your question, Dr. Branco? Okay, so how have you guys set us and, or me and my class up for success after high school? I would definitely say that the faculty here is completely focused and dedicated to, like, getting us out of here and, like, going to college and, like, no, not in, like, a mean way, but like, like, getting us out of high school, I guess. And like graduating and, and helping us every step of the way. Like, all of my teachers' office hours are open if I need help in any of their classes. And I feel like I get an email, like, every day about graduation and senior internship and everything from the staff. And they're all really proactive and focused on helping us and, like, getting us in their future. Um, yeah, I mean, I think we've all kind of done our own path in, in high school, like, done all the things that we enjoy. Um, yeah, I think you guys have all helped us with that.
Um, also to answer your question, I feel like everything, like, you guys have made me kind of do things that I didn't know would be helpful that are now really helpful, you know? Like, um, just like being kind of in, like, honors classes really helps with GPA and everything. And also, like, being in clubs that are, have been, like, very, like, it helps me know what I want to do in life. And also, every, every teacher is always open to help you with any problem. They don't say, oh, no, this is too hard or, like, this is out of my payroll or something like that. Um, they're, they're always open. And I feel like in a bigger school, that might be different because they have so many students and they, and you don't really know the teachers. And you might be scared to ask them for help outside of their class. So, yeah, I feel like something like, like, just being able to ask them anything and they'll find a way to help you, so.
And kind of going back to, like, how amazing our teachers are, I feel like, yes, partly because we're a small school. Like, I feel like I have a connection with every teacher I have, but it's also just something about Rockport. Like, every morning I walk through the halls on my way to art and Ms. Rose says good morning to me every single morning. And she doesn't have to. She takes time out of her day to ta- to say good morning to every student that she sees, and I really appreciate that. So thank you.
Do we have other questions, committee members? Comments? Yeah, we really appreciate all of you coming out. We know that you could have done other things with your time this evening. Ms. Rose, we appreciate your rounding people up. Um, I would tell you that the five of us, um, were elected to stand up on your behalf. Our job as school committee members is to make sure, um, that we have a great superintendent and that he hires a great staff and that we have a great school and we take our responsibility really seriously. And some of the most valuable presentations that we have are presentations by students because we listen to adults a lot, but we don't actually get to listen to students all that often. And it's very, very important to us, I think, that we stand up for you and that we represent you and that we do the very best we can. The size of our school system is always on our mind and that is why we are curious about, do you get enough? Is there enough for you? Do you have enough choices? Um, and so it speaks volumes to us that, um, you choose to be here in Rockport. You could have chosen to be in other places, certainly. So we're glad that you've chosen to be here with us and we're so grateful that you made time to come and speak with us tonight. We really, really appreciate you and we thank you all very, very much. Good job, parents. You raised great kids. Thank you all.
Awesome job. Thank you guys for being here tonight.
Thanks, Mrs. Rose. It's why you love your job. Yes, we see that.
I was gonna say, run real, real thing quick. Um, I would just like to thank my math teacher, Mr. Venn, because my grade was really low in math and I've been terrible at math my whole life during elementary school. But he's just a great math teacher. I could never want a better math teacher than him.
Awesome. Thank you, guys.
You know, I think we dream of winning. Right? You're up there, you win an Oscar and you can thank people. You can do it here at the school committee meeting, too, and you're on camera, so that's great. Thank you guys all very, very much. Thanks, Mrs. Rose. All right, I think we're gonna have a moment of transition, then Ms. Goodhue is going to come forward and talk to us about an AI summer program. Thank you, students, so much. Thank you, parents. Thank you, drivers. Thank you, athletes who have to go home and do homework. Oh, my gosh.
So there's nothing better than following the students, right?
Okay, so InSpirit AI reached out to Rockport about this opportunity for middle and high school students. So this is an update for you before the invitations go out. So we'll be sending out invitations to all of the families and we'll be putting it in the principal's smores and on our website. And this is a summer opportunity run by this company, taught by this time Stanford and MIT graduates. Harvard, Harvard graduates are involved as well and it's a two-week in-person AI experience for the students where they learn the core foundations of what AI is and then use it for programs either with social justice or in the middle school they do a group project together. So we just wanted to make sure that you had this information before we sent it out to the public. And you do have their brochure in with your materials.
Do we have questions from the committee? Comments?
My question was answered. I was reading it July to June and I got a little confused, but I think the brochure might just have a title.
Oh, it definitely does.
And it's not ours. We'll have to, we'll call them and have that fixed. Yeah, it'll be two weeks in the middle high school. Um, it is up to around thirty different students. It's not just for Rockport students. They'll open it up to anyone who wants to attend. Um, and last year they ran a very successful program in Burlington, Mass. last summer.
I saw that the pricing is fifteen hundred dollars. Is there an opportunity for scholarships?
There is an opportunity for scholarship. Yes.
We'll have way more information after the event, obviously, so I'm guessing Jody will come back probably next fall and let us know how it went. And, um, did they randomly pick, like, how they reach out to you, I guess?
Um, they are looking for regional hubs. If you want my real thought, most of the people who founded this are from the West Coast. It started in the West Coast. They did Seattle first, worked with Microsoft a lot and then came this way. I think they looked at what's a very scenic place that we can have a two-week experience that's on the ocean because it's different from Burlington. So they just cold called. And I, I meet with, um, the person who's running this once every other month to talk about updates and making sure that the materials are there. And we're gonna send out the invitations on Friday so that they're out before Thanksgiving so that our students have more of an opportunity to sign up than others.
I'm sorry not to know this. Have we had a lot of other summer opportunities like this? No.
No.
And, um, I, I, I'm, I'm just, I'm looking at that price tag and I'm thinking about students who are saving money to go on a choir trip. And I'm thinking about, somebody help me.
Yeah, for, so, so for someone who's paid for a lot of summer activities, a lot of sports teams in the summer, everything from daycare to summer camps, that's actually not, um, an abnormally high price point at all for, um, taking care of my kids for three hours a day for two weeks. Um, and now getting an educational opportunity out of it as well.
Yeah, if you look at hourly, it's really not that much to have an MIT and, you know, person teaching an actual AI course.
And they are working with you.
They will work with me. They will accept the applications and go through the applications and then they'll be able to work with us specifically for students who are in need. And again,
Which is actually not the case for some of the other programs.
A lot of other programs won't do that, but this is, I mean, getting this out now, it gives families time to pick this over. You know, you pick your summer camps by February, March. Um, and, yeah, I mean, we've paid quite a lot of money for summer camps, Pingree camps and, um, La Vida camps. It's, it's not completely outrageous for a whole two-week experience to cost this much money.
Thank you for that perspective. And my second question is if interest is very, very high, is there a process for some kind of a lottery?
Um, I think they would open up to have as many classes as we can. They feel that the twenty to thirty is what they normally get in a summer. So they'll need two to three classrooms in our middle high school and they'll come in and use it there. So this is their historical data on what they've done in the past. Their biggest one was in Microsoft land with one hundred eighty high school students for one summer a few years back.
And I bet all these folks are background checked and vetted before they
Yep, that we'd run our courses.
Walk in with our students. Thank you so much. Are there any other questions from the committee? All right. Thank you so much. All right, I think, um, that allows you to move on to AnalyticView.
Which we have been talking about for a very long time. Um, and this is your opportunity to just see a little bit of what it looks like and what we're doing with it. So this is, um, language lifted right from their website. But the important part here is knowing that we have all of that data in one secure place, one platform, with multiple dashboards to represent all of the data that we can possibly pull and get into the system. So this is all of the things that we are currently looking at data in all of these different programs and/or systems. So this is where we're pulling from. So Aspen pulls the top group and then all of the different assessment data that we've talked about a million times, plus our MCAS, AP and SAT are all in this one platform. It is our welcome to Rockport Public Schools AnalyticView. Um, and we have an MTSS module in there as well, which will track, um, support plans and progress monitoring. This is, they're screenshots with some redacted information, just showing you that we can pull enrollment from a dashboard and that will show enrollment broken down by school, broken down by gender, by subgroups. It's real-time, live data. It's, and just when you're looking at numbers, this is not connected to our IEP system. Um, ESPED is not one that we're using, so it has to be the accurate, up-to-date information in Aspen. So if a new student is on an IEP or a student has taken off an IEP, it might take a day or two to catch up. Um, and then it's broken down by grade, race. All of these have filters so we can drill down. If we click on a bar, we can see who those students are. We have an attendance dashboard, which is, um, I know that the high school is starting to use this. It's really helpful for the dean and the assistant principal to be tracking absences and look at the chronic absentee piece. Um, we, it's, again, every one of these, you can drill down, you can click on, you can filter. So we can track by school, by race. The scatter plot in the top right-hand corner, each one of those little dots, you click on it, it gives by reason. So if it is a doctor's note or a college, why is the absence happening? And then drill down again by grades or, um, student-level data under the chronic absenteeism. Multiple, multiple different dashboards having to do with all of the data that is pulled from different places. So this is just a scattering of what those different, um, dashboards look like. Again, we can filter, we can filter by year, we can filter by level, we can filter by grade level. We can filter all the way down to looking at specific students in here. Um, and then the new RTI model, we have an RTI dashboard for math and one for reading, which triangulates the data so that we can identify three different levels of students in terms of what supports they might need, what level they're at. There are role-specific dashboards, so one important aspect of this is every staff member only has access to what they should have. It's not just wide open. Elementary teachers have who are in their classrooms, middle school teachers have who are in their classrooms. There are teacher dashboards, there are administrator dashboard, dashboards. So everybody only has access to the data that they should. The teacher roster view on the left would actually be student names. So you could see, um, all of these assessment data for each student there. And then the, of course, the administrator dashboards, we can filter it by school so we can drill down to school and then to grade level and then to student data through that dashboard. And the student profile is one whole page for each student. So it has their little picture and their name and all the demographic data there. You get a summary of their attendance. We can track the attendance by monthly, so you can see it on the calendar. If there's a pattern, then it's every Friday. All of their assessment data is there. We can sort every single one of those columns so that we can sort by assessment or by level. Um, we can track their assessments over time where you see the line graphs. And then at the bottom, right-hand side is we can look at standards mastery, so we can drill down to standard-specific data. And then it has an analytics platform where there are questions developed and then there are reports assigned to each different kind of question that's asked, having to do with enrollment or attendance or anything. So looking at them, the question, how does performance vary across and within schools? That one is just looking at the, I think, MCAS math data, but we can filter that for any data we want. The, um, circle graph on the bottom is students sorted by disability category. So when you click on those and hover, you can see how many students and what that actual category is. And the one on the right is, I just pulled a couple of grades to look at chronically absent students. Very customizable. We're able to build any new dashboards we want in addition to that. Um, and this is, you know, really starting to get used in the pockets of data meetings and in grade level team times when we're looking at reassigning win blocks. So in terms of the use, of course, um, using the data, the data dashboards is helping us track all of these different things for intervention planning. Um, we can also look at trends and gaps in areas over time. Um, the MTSS plans, goals and progress monitoring is in there for that personalized experience for each student. The triangulated dashboard is going to give us what we need for every IST meeting, SST meeting. And, um, you know, in terms of growth me, um, methods, we're able to, metrics, we're able to take a look at that and decide how to intensify instruction for specific students. Like, do they need more time? Do they need a longer duration? Do they need more dates, more weeks? Do they need a smaller-sized group? Do they need a one-to-one? And then we can do a lot of curricular and instructional action steps based on the data meanings using this data. And then there's this aggregated data. The, the ability to actually take those and with a click of a button, break it down to a subgroup is so much easier than looking at it the way we used to look at it in the past. Um, it's very easy to access and it's really streamlined the process.
This intent was to give you a ten-thousand-foot view tonight purposely because we've talked so much, particularly Jody's talked so much about this tool and this product. And, you know, I feel like since my first day on the job, it's been a conversation about we needed to strengthen our systems and this is one of the biggest ways we've been doing that. The question at the top of this slide has been workshopped repeatedly and as recently as within the past week. Um, and so we wanted to, you know, we've heard a lot from the school committee, we've heard a lot from teachers, we've heard a lot from the leadership team, um, around the why and around, you know, at what point does our investment, do we get the return on investment, so to speak? At what, what point are we really gonna be talking about the growth over time for our kids? And we know it's happening, but it's happening in pockets and it's not happening across all when we say all means all. So this is a conversation we've been having in different meetings and in different settings. Um, and we really settled on this kind of driving question recently just to say, listen, how is this helping us do this? And, you know, my hope is, and our hope, I think, is we come back at the end of this year and even into next year, we'll be able to have real, authentic conversations with you about, um, you know, types of kids, pockets of kids, groups of students who really have demonstrated growth towards meeting or exceeding those grade-level standards. And growth looks different for all students and how we define that is gonna be important moving forward. But, um, it's a, it's been a big lift to pull this information together. And Jody and Anne Marie and Amy and Amy are spending a lot of time, um, together and then a lot of time with teachers in either grade-level team meetings, content meetings or in curriculum leadership meetings, making sure that we have an understanding of, listen, public schools have never, um, been hurting for data. We have always had plenty of data. It's, do we have a way to collate it, pull it together, um, and action, make it actionable? And that's really the step we're at. We've kind of hit that spot right now where we need to make it actionable as a district so that it impacts kids. And all of these structures we've talked to you about, you know, hopefully that's the report that's gonna be coming through over the next six months to a year, um, as we get better at, um, shifting our instructional practices and shifting how we meet kids programmatically based on this information. So I'll stop and I can flip through the slides if you want to go back and forth on them if you have any questions about different things you saw.
Thank you so much. Okay, questions? Go right ahead. Go ahead, Nicole.
Um, I guess my question, I mean, this is all great and I admit to, at times, being very overwhelmed by data as a school committee member, um, in presentations. Where, so I guess you kind of answered, Mark, but, um, what kind of PD is involved in sort of getting teachers, administrators and teachers, um, comfortable with this? And sort of where do you feel like we're at? And how long do you anticipate it would take until people are sort of, or I'm sure that varies by person, but?
It definitely varies by person. It varies by school as well. Some schools are way more versed with looking at these kinds of data reports and have done it, um, frequently. Others know how to do this in each separate system. So Mike Montgomery and I meet with this company every single Tuesday morning. So over the course of time, we get to, they'll build new dashboards for us, they'll change the way it looks, they'll flip something upside down. So we have met with every, um, grade-level team in the middle school and they didn't ask for any help whatsoever with this. They just jumped in and started using it. We're using it with the coordinators and we've used it with the coordinators at the elementary school who are now starting their, um, data meetings with each grade-level team. So now that we have a couple of the kinks that we had, we had the way we code our, um, special education liaisons in Aspen, called them a team teacher, which is what they are, but it wasn't pulling them, so they didn't have access to students. So we fixed that. The, being able to open up, um, a dashboard and see who are the lower twenty percent based on IREDDI and who are the lower twenty percent based on HMH, well, even though it was harder and took longer, we could do that in the systems we had. So they just finalized building that triangulation, um, MTSS dashboard for us. So now that we're in the right place and we have passed, um, having Niaske come to a faculty meeting, Mike Montgomery and I do plan on doing some more PD sessions at faculty meetings and/or with grade-level teams moving forward. And if we feel the need, AnalyticView will do the PD for us.
I guess I'm in more of a comment mood tonight. I just, since, you know, I've heard about, uh, collecting this data last, in last year for the first time, to now, and thinking about how great it would be and knowing how important it is to have this kind of data. But then tonight, hearing the students talk about how they feel like really seen by their teachers and staff members, like, I just think that how amazing this is gonna be because not only are we getting data, but we have faculty members that really know each student on a more personal level and I just think this is gonna be amazing for the district.
It's also gonna help us close that homeschool gap or the homeschool, or maintain the homeschool partnership. I, I believe you could speak to this better than I can, but I believe we have sent communications home to all families recently as well who, to let them know, um, what's happening in the win block. And for me as a parent and for me as a recovering principal, um, I think that's an important thing to hear that, you know, we have this information and we're not just doing something to the kids or to help the kids that the families don't know.
Yeah, we had a solid quarter of middle school win that was really targeted support with our acceleration specialists having their own sections. So now that we've passed one quarter, we met and we regrouped and, um, changed up our cohorts based on all of the beginning-of-year data. Every teacher who's teaching a literacy or a math win section sent an email home to the parents. So they're, they know I'm their teacher, this is what the win goal and focus area is and we'll be working on this for the next quarter. Um, I believe that the end of the first trimester at the elementary school is a good time for us to do that and give them more information about our win, which is still a work in progress. Once a week is tricky, um, and then having them flip one week is literacy and one week is math. We, we need to collect some more data ourselves on the, not the data of, um, the progress, but the data of what are the instructional methods, what are the curriculum materials we're using and what is the goal for each focus area there. So that's beginning of December, we, um, plan to send more information out for the elementary school.
Uh, just to follow up on that, so like I, you had mentioned how you've reaching out to families, you know, is this data something you'll be sharing with families on their individual students?
If they ask and then once we get through quarter two, we're gonna look at a way to report the progress to the parents. In addition to a report card, they'll get another progress report showing their progress in the specific skill areas they're working on in the win block.
And so I just have a question, this, and I might have missed this at some point. So every administrator and teacher has access to this dashboard on this data? It's not just data that you're giving them. They can go in anytime and they have?
They can all find it themselves. It used to be me and a couple other people pulling it all together, putting in spreadsheets, sharing folders and then meeting with them from there. Now everybody just clicks that button, one sign-in, single sign-in, and they have access to their students. to their students.
I would love to hear, you know, I know this is not now, but in the future, I'd love to hear maybe how some teachers are, you know, whether they come or whether, you know, you just gather some of their stories, how they're, you know, as you say, clicking on, looking at the data for their specific students and how that's informing their instruction on, you know, a week-to-week or even a day-to-day basis with certain standards. I mean, I would, I think that'd be very powerful to hear that. So maybe in the future.
I really appreciate the balance in this evening's presentations. We had a long line of students talk to us about how much they love their school and how welcome they feel and how good it feels to be here. And we love to hear that. That's very, very powerful. We care a lot that kids feel welcome, that they love their school, that they feel good about what they're doing. Very, very important. It's also important that we focus on student achievement and growth. And I appreciate the crafting of the question because we talk a lot through our strategy for district improvement about all of the work that the adults are doing. And we have seen adults do an extraordinary amount of work in the past three years. I mean, it's really enormous to think about the initiatives to get everybody to pull in the right direction. And I particularly appreciate the willingness now to gradually come around and to begin to really have a laser-like focus on, why are we doing this? We absolutely want kids to feel welcome and to belong and to love to come so that they're ready to learn. And then we really care that they're making growth and that they're achieving. So I appreciate that. The other thing I appreciate, and I think we all do, is that it takes a lot, not just to find the vendor that you want and select the system and find the money and pay the bill and get the contract right, but then it takes a lot to figure out how to use it, how to provide in-service, how to work with Mike. I'm guessing Mike is the system administrator. It's an enormous responsibility and it's a lot of work to get this to be accurate and to go. And my only question after all that blah, 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 is this takes time. It doesn't just take care of itself. Somebody has to tend Analytic View. It's part of their job description. Is that Mr. Montgomery who gets to do that? Are you the system administrator?
I am. He does a lot of the back pulling from...
May the force be with you.
Yes. And Monty is the one who funded this. So the money came from the tech department as well, not from the school budget. And Mike will do a lot of CSV pulling. Comma separated values. It's like an Excel spreadsheet, but he pulls the files out of the systems and then just sends them. I do half, he does half. But we have one company that does a data sharing agreement, so it's automatic. So if we could get more companies to do that with Analytic View, it'd make it just done. We wouldn't have to do any polls anymore.
I think we really appreciate the effort and the organization and getting it done and coming in tonight to show us the progress. And I know we look forward to hearing how it goes and to having people come back and share some more.
And just one more shout, we found this at MasQ. That is where this came from, which Monty also funds all of us to go to MasQ as well. So I sat in a session and saw this and then dragged Mike to the next session and then said, "Monty, pay for this." So.
All right. Thank you so much. And our next presentation is Anne Marie Lester, our Director of Student Services. She is going to walk us through our Special Education Program Evaluation Summary. Wherever you want, take it away.
I'm comfortable right here. Thank you, though.
And I think all of us have had a chance to go through this and read this ahead of time. We've had this in our drive. So I'm hopeful that we are well-prepped for your presentation.
Sure. So as most of you know, I'm in the, starting my second year in this position. Last year, when I took the helm, I realized that DSE is coming this March. You'll learn much more about that at our next school committee meeting, I believe, to do what they call a focused tiered monitoring. So they come and they look at our civil rights and our special ed programming, and they evaluate us. So part of that expectation is that our department does a program review. We hadn't had one since 2018. So we decided to do a comprehensive, full program review, all aspects. Moving forward, we'll just pick and choose aspects of our programming, but thought it was in our best interest to look at the big picture. So that's the why. Last year, when I took the position, I was lucky enough to get a mentor who had been my boss previously. So Pam Gerard, who has moved on to lab, gave me the name of Ann Donovan, who works for Case Collaborative. She came highly recommended, so she came here, helped us develop the three guiding questions that we use to sort of frame what we were looking at because there were so many aspects of what we could look at. And then she came, we submitted some information to her, she used a variety of different tools, rating scales. She did interviews with our staff, administrative staff and teachers. She came and did observations and we were able to kind of give her some feedback. So she used all of that, pulled it all together to write this report. And I just want to note that she came last fall, winter, and we got the report in March. So much of this data and this information is from last year. So it will look different, or it currently looks different, I guess is my point. So she pulled some notable strengths. One was our inclusive model. She talked very highly about our manageable caseloads. So our teacher-student ratio was very good. She also talked very highly of our collaborative teaching model, so special ed teacher, regular teacher working together. She also highlighted that over 79% of our students with disabilities are educated in a full inclusion setting. And I know when we look at that, we say 79, and, you know, but that's in relation, it's comparing our numbers to the state numbers. So obviously, our goal is to get that as close to 100 as we can. And that's what we're working toward, but that was a notable strength for us, which was nice. She also talked about the strategic focus on increasing our tiered supports. So she talked about our high-quality instructional materials, which are evidence-based DSE standards for our Tier One in math and literacy. She was very happy with our win model at the middle school and specifically because it focuses on Tier Two instruction in math and literacy. And she was happy, she was, she said, "In a time when you're making cuts, you're adding acceleration specialists." So that's something to commend, to commend you on and to note. She also talked about our development of specialized programs. So last fall, I talked to you about our intensive learning program, which is a K-2 program that was sort of in the process of being developed and implemented. And she was fully, like, helping us, sort of guide us in that, in that process, which was nice. And she also said, "For a small school, we have a therapeutic learning center in our elementary school and we have a therapeutic support space in our middle high school." And so given our size and capacity, that was something that she thought very highly of. And then finally, our strong administrative leadership and collaboration. This obviously is based on feedback from staff, so described as accessible, supportive, collaborative, and our willingness to consider and expand our programming was important. So those were all our strengths. And then areas of improvement. So the way that I organized this was to really just focus on the areas of improvement that she noted and then what we have done already to remedy that. So one of the things that we've been focusing on the last two years is identification of students with disabilities. So we've talked before about our out-of-district placements. They are more than twice the state average. We've talked about why that is. Our capacity to target some of the highest need students, we're just not able to do that. So we use our consortium and other out-of-district placements to do that. We also identify students with disabilities that are higher rate than the state average, so approximately 4% higher. And out of those identifications, we've been identifying students with emotional impairments at double the state average. So we can look at the reasoning for that. That might have been because of COVID. It might have been because we didn't have any Tier Two SEL, social-emotional programming or supports. So we took a look at why that was and we looked at criteria and structures to really pull that back together. One is the identification piece, but two are the support pieces. So if special ed is the only game in town to support our students, then, you know, that's what was happening, right? So we've created a lot of professional development opportunities, talked a lot about the emotional impairment definition, what that means, and then what we can implement in school to help alleviate some of that. And then we've also talked a lot about how to reduce our out-of-district placements. We will always have a certain percentage. We have, over the last 10 years, ranged around 18%, and that seems pretty consistent. But we also have looked at the behavioral, the students that are placed because of behavioral and social-emotional disabilities. Is there a way to expand our current therapeutic programming to transition some of those students back or prevent them from leaving in the first place? So we've had a lot of in-house conversations about that. One of our other areas in need of improvement was our MTSS framework. So more the social-emotional piece to support what we just talked about. So social-emotional learning, our programming, she noted was fragmented. There was a lack of screening tools and inconsistent integration across all grade levels. So we worked in silos, we didn't collaborate, and that added to this area. So she also told us to take a good look at our Tier Two supports because that is a result of our over-referral. So she kind of made that connection. So as a response, we are looking to implement a social-emotional curriculum into our MTSS model. So looking at something that is engaging for students, doesn't feel like something extra and is really relevant and on point where the students will engage. We are working to adopt a social-emotional screening tool that will give us a lot of information about where our strengths are and where we need to really focus in terms of student needs. We're also working to improve our Tier Two supports in the social-emotional framework and utilizing WIN for that. So not just focusing on the math and literacy, but also targeting those social-emotional things. Couldn't think of the word for a second. And then really also looking at our Tier Three social-emotional support. So that's sort of the very small population, but what are we doing? And that's where we need to step up to keep students in-house. And then Jody and I and other district leaders are looking at our D cap and really looking at revising that and then informing our staff on what it is, how to use it, and the steps to do that. The third place that she felt we needed to focus on was our paraprofessional role in oversight. So our district employs paraprofessionals at nearly double the state average. She also talked about role clarity was, needed to be looked at and training was lacking. And she noted that we, as a district, were expecting our paraprofessionals to deliver instruction without any real adequate consultation, preparation, or supervision. So we were asking our paraprofessionals to work with our most vulnerable population without doing any of those things. So as a response, part of when we negotiated our para-contract last year, they are now with us for all of our PD time, which has been great. So we've taken the opportunity to look at their role clarity and training. The way that a role looks at in an elementary building is very different than a middle high school. If you're a one-on-one or in an intensive learning program, that's very different. So really looking at specific skills for each role and what they need to do that. We had, anytime we have new paraprofessionals, we have a manual and we have orientation at the beginning of the year. It's harder to do if we hire someone now, but we have the opportunity at least to work with them during half-days and PD days. With myself being in this role and Paula Donnelly being in the special ed facilitator role, being in administrative roles, we are now working to evaluate paraprofessionals. And so we figured if you have a special ed administrator working to improve paraprofessional, that was just, made sense and it should, ultimately, it should be very helpful and insightful. So that's, that's exciting and it gives us an opportunity to go and see what's happening. Some of the PD that we've already talked about, really it's ethics and belonging, how to create that sense of belonging. We've talked about de-escalation strategies. We had a PD called What to Do When, and we're doing more of that as we move forward. So we're soliciting feedback from them. What do they need, feel that they need to be more effective? And then using that to tailor the PD. Some of it we're doing in-house, some of it we are contracting other people for. So it's a good mix. And finally, she focused on the strategic utilization of staff to provide a broad continuum of services. So looking, really looking at K-12, making sure it was continuous. So she focused on, we have staff or had staff with advanced training who were not used to their potential. We did not align their assignments with their expertise. That has now changed. So when we look at middle, high school, special education caseloads, they used to be grade level, assigned by grade level. Now we've really shaken it up and really focused on, if a teacher is certified math, well, that would make sense. They're a special ed teacher and they're certified math, so they should focus on students with math disabilities. So we've really tried to structure it so it's more that they're really using their expertise. And they seem to, has also evened out caseloads a little bit because if they were grade level, in eighth grade, you could have 14, and in sixth grade, you could have 20 or eight, you know, just, it was very random. So now this helps even things out as well. She also talked about academic support classes and pull-out services. They lacked defined structure and instructional focus. So the point of an academic support block, for example, is to provide, a special ed teacher to provide specially-designed instruction to help achieve goals on their IEP. In the upper levels, it, for a little bit, was more focused on homework and trying to stay caught up and help them access, you know, that way. So we've really pulled back and talked about, yes, that is nice that we're doing that, but the IEP needs to drive that instructional time. And so we're focusing our observations on that to make sure that that's happening. That's not to say that they still can't do MCAS Mondays or Transition Tuesdays or throw some other things in there, but the goals on the IEP and the specially-designed instruction really are the focus of that time. So it was just kind of going back to basics a little bit. And finally, alignment and clarity in specialized therapeutic programs. So just to be transparent, this is something that we're looking at a little more closely and Donovan's coming back this year to really look at this type of stuff. So given the numbers for emotional impairments and disabilities and our out-of-district caseloads based on those things, she's really coming to be a consultant and help us realign this area. So last year, RISE, which is now TSS, so I know there's a lot of acronyms, it's a therapeutic support space. support space, now that's what it's called, but it, last year, it did not have a certified staff member in the room 100% of the time. There was a certified person overseeing the program, but just not available all the time. So that has changed. And so now it's fully overseen by a special education teacher. There was very little alignment from our TLC program coming up to RISE. She wanted to know why a criteria didn't match, why the priorities weren't the same, and we didn't know why. So now we're really taking a look at that and really focusing on skill development in those places. It's not, you know, we have to figure out what students' skills are lacking and reintegrate them into the classroom as often as possible. So that's the goal. And staff had expressed the need to expand our programming in terms of eligibility criteria and in goals, so we've really looked at that as well. We've already changed the name from RISE to TSS, so it has different focus and criteria. And so that's a work in progress. And like I said, Anne will be here in January to look at our programming and more, she won't just provide a report as she did last time, she'll come and work with us as a team to move us forward in that area. I know I gave you the quick overview. You have the full report, but I just figured I'd give you the big picture.
I think you gave us an excellent overview. Thank you so much. I know people have had a little bit of time with the report, and I'm guessing there will be some comments and perhaps some questions. You all can just jump right in.
Or not.
I thought that the, you know, I was, it was great to see sort of the strengths listed because it seemed like a lot of the strengths were things that are sort of like the bedrock of things that you would then build, you know, when you're talking about specific programming and IEP goals and all of those things. Those are things that build on top of things like administrators and leaders being accessible, supportive, and collaborative, and inclusion, and manageable caseloads and support and all those things. So I thought that I really, I thought that it was kind of impactful that the strengths were sort of like these foundational things. My question in the report, only because I just remember way back when, I think I've been here long enough that I was here when co-teaching started in our district, and there was a lot, sort of a lot of questions about it then. And I wasn't sure, is, so is the, I know she mentioned PD with co-teaching, so what, what do you see as sort of the plan going forward with that? Or can you point me to where?
So we didn't highlight that tonight as part of what we're doing, and it's not part of our PD plan this year. We have contracted with Kelly Martins of Martins Consulting. She came and did two sessions with us already. The last session we have open to gear it toward whatever we need, and part of the conversation has been around co-teaching or UDL, Universal Design, Learning by Design, Learning by Design? Thank you. Okay. And really focusing on, on those two pieces. So there was a real focus on co-teaching before COVID, and then everything changed. And so it's not that we don't co-teach. Our special ed staff are in the room. It's just, it wasn't to the level that she expected. So that is something that Amy and I and Mark have talked about, and it's, like I said, it's not part of this year's PD plan, but looking forward, that's definitely something that we need to reinvigorate and refocus on.
Can I ask one more question? Could you sort of, could you give us an example of what a Tier Two support might be that were, that would help with sort of that maybe over-identification or use of special education? What, like, what would an example be?
So in, I, I think the math and literacy, that's an easy one to, to talk about, right? But the social emotional piece is very different. So it, when, are you talking about the math and literacy or the social emotional?
The social emotional.
Okay. So it would be more focused on skill building. So we often talk about behavior is a lack of a skill. They're trying to communicate something and they can't because, for whatever reason. So if a child is having a difficult time self-advocating or communicating their needs, we explicitly teach that at that level. If it's about emotional regulation, we give them a toolbox of skills to use. And so it's not just what every other student gets, it's more individualized. And so if you give those students those tools, they may not require additional specialized instruction that, so they wouldn't require special ed. If that makes sense. Yeah.
I'm curious, a, a lot of your response to these areas of improvements, you started to implement even last year, and then now we're already in November. So looking back at the last couple of months this year and then even the end of last year, what have, what has been, kind of, what have you noticed has improved, like, in the building with the students? What have you noticed is really improving?
One of the major, I think, changes is our intensive learning program. That program, the goal is to, it's for students who have a difficult time accessing the curriculum in the classroom. And so these students are working with a teacher and they're getting explicit instruction, and they're in the classroom more often every week. And so they can tolerate more their, so their skills, their academic skills, but their tolerance and stamina of being able to be in the classroom is significantly different. We have not been qualifying students at the same rate that we had because we have conversations about what that looks like. So that's been a change. And I think honestly, I think teachers, especially in the middle, high school, I mean, I could defer to Amy, but I think that our special ed staff are teaching small classes. They're not just a support in a classroom, and so they feel like they're making a bigger difference that way. And they're actually making an impact and the students are benefiting from that. So we're seeing progress in those areas as well.
Just a follow-up on that. You, you said you haven't been qualifying at, to the same rate?
Yep.
Is that across all disabilities or really just that emotional one?
All, but yeah. Or if we're doing reevaluations, we're, we're to a point where, yeah, they are no longer eligible because they're making effective progress, they've learned what they needed to learn. Yeah.
Thank you.
I think it's great that you all reached out, and I understand that when you have a big visit coming up down the road, you want to get things in order ahead of that. But obviously, this is good in and of itself. And it's so interesting to listen to you talk because you're not just talking about what will happen for students, you're talking about what will happen for teachers and for para-professionals. And I was so impressed by this overview. I thought that the discussion, for instance, of co-teaching was excellent and that any general education teacher would benefit from reading that little chart because it's such a brilliant overview of what are the different models? And, you know, there, it's developmental and you get better and better as you go, and you might start here, but you want to get there.
And we have some great co-teaching pairs right now. We have a great one in chemistry, and you walk in and you would not know who the regular ed teacher and who the special ed teacher are, which is the goal. That just, unfortunately, that just doesn't, that's not in every area.
Well, it takes a long time to develop and there are implications for the master schedule for common plan time and everything else. I mean, it's, what you are describing is really, really complex to achieve. And so I suspect that I speak for a lot of parents when I say how much I appreciate the initiative and the organization that it takes to find a great consultant, to bring that person in, and to organize even for that visit, to get everybody to, ready to go and all the visits and the scheduling and, and I think that the report is wonderful. I do wonder if this report is public or if this is just for us? And there's not a right or wrong answer, I'm just idly curious. And I, I think about the Special Education Parent Advisory Committee and whether they've, will have a presentation as well.
They will have a presentation. They knew it was happening. They had the opportunity to speak with her as well. And their next meeting is actually a presentation, their basic legal law training. So the December meeting, they'll have an opportunity to ask questions and reflect on that.
That's great. I appreciate the leadership that gets this done and the benefit that it has for students. And I, I look forward to seeing what happens as you go and to hearing more.
Thank you.
It seems like great work. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Branco.
Can I ask a question to Mark, kind of in that lines of what you were just talking about? I mean, we talked tonight about the growth and achievement with Analytic View and now the, you know, special education and social emotional learning. These are two really big things happening right now at the school that we've been talking about, you know, since you came on board, and I feel like it's here now and it's, it's in place, and I find that very, very exciting. I'm kind of wondering if you could speak to a minute about where you kind of feel like we're at right now and what you kind of see the next few months and the next year bringing along with it.
I think what a lot of us keep talking about is it's time to demonstrate and celebrate student growth because we probably could have been doing that for the past three years more, but we've been working so hard on so many structures and putting programming in place and having superintendent entry plans and new budget development and, and new budget structures and staffing and, you know, the list, right? Consolidation of two schools into one, it goes on and on. And then these two big areas of focus tonight, we've talked a lot that at this point in time, we need to make sure that these systems are going to take hold, take root, and now we're doing them, not setting them up. And then we need to keep our eye on the prize, which is all students are making growth towards, towards grade level standards. So I'm most excited to just start talking about that because I feel like I've just, we've been a team of architects for a while. And I, and, which is appropriate, I think. It had been appropriate, it might still be all the time to some extent, but I think we have to stop building the building structure and just take, take charge of, of everybody who's in the building now.
I think about that process that I think we learned about in our summer workshop a year or so ago where you start, let's see if I get it right, the first stage is forming, the second, that's when you're coming together. The second stage is when you're storming, that's when you're like, and then you're norming, which is where I think we are. And then, of course, you cross your fingers that that leads to performing, right? And it takes time to get that forming and storming and norming and to get the systems where you want them to go. And this is not done in isolation, which is so powerful. I mean, to have consultants come in and to say, this is what we see around the state, this is what you should be looking for, whatever, it, whatever it is, whether it's the budget development process or special education or analytic view or AI or your policy manual. I mean, think about all this stuff. Yeah, it's a lot.
Yeah, but we started with the voices of students tonight, which was beautiful, right? So we, we get the, we get the voice of the kids out here talking about authentic opportunities in fifth grade, and we got a row of middle school and high school kids talking to us about how they feel about their school. And some of them, dare I say, even spoke about how they feel like they've academically grown, they've socio-emotionally grown, or they've been able to explore areas of interest. So there's plenty of anecdotal data out there and real data. It's just going to be more, it's going to be more gratifying, I think, now moving forward to really take a good look at that and be able to kind of put names to it.
Is there anything else from the committee before we go to the next topic? All right. Thank you, Anne Marie Lester. We really appreciated your presentation. And June Sanfilippo, it is your turn.
So you have, so you have in your drive both June's overview and then kind of the deeper dive of it. So she's put together a couple of highlights that she'll talk us through tonight after we have, believe it or not, already completed quarter one, which is crazy to say out loud.
So you have it in your drive, and some of those, a couple of highlights I'd like to point out is as a result of developing of the elementary school's intensive learning program, there's currently a surplus in the special ed transportation tuition line expense. So great for that. Also, as a result, we, of not filling the elementary school psychologist position, that's why you saw a surplus in the special ed elementary instructional faculty line. And the third point would be the wellness center removal of the trailer greenhouse. That's why you now see under unanticipated capital expense, that would have been the cost of all of that, our share. The DPW had generously, it would have been extensively more without their assistance. And so now, if everything remains the same, we could see potentially 2.5 million at the end of the year in our reserves.
I am curious about the second bullet. As a result of not filling the RES school psychologist position, given what we just heard about our special education services, did we choose not to fill that or were we simply unable to find somebody and are we still searching?
All of that, yes. We have, it was not a strategic move. We actually have tried to fill that position. I, I came to probably post it a half a dozen times at this point.
The posting to be part-time versus full-time, just trying to get someone to come even a few days a week, and we have been unable to find someone.
So right now, we have great staff members stepping up, correct?
And we're consulting out.
And we're consulting out, but that is not our desire, our long-term desire is to really have our own person who knows our kids, knows our families as part of our staff. And we're going to keep pushing at that, but right now, it happens, it happens to be a budgetary impact to the, to the good.
I guess for the benefit of people watching perhaps at home, I might also, let's make sure I understand. Bullet number one, there's currently a surplus in special education transportation vans and tuition expense lines. This follows on the report that we heard last month, close of FY 2025, where if I'm not mistaken, special education came in $225,000 to the good. And so my takeaway, and I want you to tell me if this is accurate, my takeaway is that something is changing in the way we're managing some of our special education expenses, and that's having a positive impact on the budget. That is an area that has raised so many questions over the years. And am I correct that we're sort of heading in a better direction?
You are correct. It's just not, I know, I, I'm looking at you, I know.
I know.
It's, it's, as I think.
If there's credit due, that's fine.
So there is credit due, but at the same time, as every superintendent since the dawn of time has said, that is a very volatile and unpredictable line. So yes, you're right. Right now, it's, it's good hard work.
I'd love it if it were a trend, but I, I think what you're saying is, it looks good, but you can't call it a trend. We know that a very, it, it, anything can change at any time in this part of the budget. And you've schooled us well, but I just thought I would note that now twice in two months, we've had a little bit of light in that tunnel, and that's certainly positive. Are there other questions or comments from board members, committee members? All okay? Thank you so much for being with us tonight. Thank you for the presentation. All right. I believe that leads, Dr. Branco, anything else on the budget? Okay. Then that leads us to item number 12, School Committee Discussion. I will start out by saying it's always exciting to see another addition of In the Loop Go Out. When I am outside, neighbors walk by and say, I saw that, I noticed it, I liked it. And what's really great is to hear people say, I didn't get that, I didn't get that. I'm like, wow, we can fix that. So it's great to see that, that go out. Appreciate that. The other thing I would say is that two of us are headed off next week to the Massachusetts Association of School Committee Members State Conference, and so we'll learn as much as we can and report back. A couple of updates, other updates or things on people's minds? Any, any other things like Board of Health or other committees that we've been out to or heard from?
I was just going to mention that it crossed my mind when you said that we're going to the statewide conference that. we're going to miss the, is it called Family Connections with Amy Rose, which is coming up, coming up that Thursday night. It's going to be at Brackets with both, okay. So if anyone, I will be sad to miss it. But if, for people out there, and I think if anyone on the committee, it's kind of an exciting new location. And I think the topic is on relationships. So if anyone on the committee wants to attend or anyone out there, I think that that's a really worthwhile thing. And I appreciate that, that we, that we do those and give us a chance to connect with families and families to connect with administrators and.
I would also say we've been hearing about Mr. Lorenz's exchange student and it's just so fabulous to see her here and to see how happy she is. It is so great to see that work out. I mean, last year we talked about finding placements and now here she is at our meeting. That is really, really fun.
She's a fabulous goalie. So that also, well, that's exciting too. But she just seems delightful and how, how nice. And
since we have people on camera, are we looking for one more host family? Well, that's awesome. And then I know Decca was looking for folks to help with Career Day. Hope that got done.
They're always looking for people.
Always looking for help.
So you can email Scott Larson, his email can be found right on the website. Or if you can't find that one, just reach out to Principal Rose or someone at the high school and they'll, they'll point you in Scott's direction.
All right. Any other thoughts or comments? Are we all okay? Do we have a need for executive session? All right, then, hearing that, I would be happy to have a motion to adjourn.
So moved?
All in favor?
Hi.
Thank you all so much. Have a great evening.